I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a quick announcement before we get started. Council President Tom Pato is joining us via the phone tonight. And you're stuck with me in charge, so. All right. We have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. One is from the February 23rd work study, and then the other one is the town council meeting on February 17th. So I will entertain a motion for the 223 work study.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the work study.
We have a first?
Second.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Now, the town council minutes from February 17th, I would entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Five oh. All right, on to the public comment. Mr. Morgan, do we have anybody that would like to speak this evening?
Mr. Vice President, I've received no request to speak.
Okay. Very good. On to the meeting then. First up, item A, street closure for Mayberry Manor, premier in Danville, Mr. Dan Disler.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How is everybody?
Wonderful.
Thank you. Good, good. I don't, first time I've been here for your group, and, oh, great, thank you. And what I'm doing, I'm representing the people, and actually, I'm here on behalf of Stark Howe and Court Howe, the people who actually wrote and directed and produced the movie. The movie is finished. It is great, and everybody from Danville will just absolutely love the movie when they see it. And what we're planning on doing is, since you're not having the Mayberry in the Midwest Festival, we initially wanted to release the movie to the VIP, people that actually helped sponsor the movie. We're going to have a red carpet event during that Mayberry in the Midwest Festival, and since you've canceled that, we're still kind of committed to the people who sponsored the movie, and it's ready to go, and we're ready to go, and we would like to still do it on May 15th. And we want to do a red carpet event. We'd like to close off, I had a meeting a week and a half ago with Bill Wright and some of the other people here in town to help out and let them know what's going on. Bill Wright is 100% behind all this, and my plan was to do a mini-festival, and instead of calling it Mayberry in the Midwest, in the movie, the festival is actually called Mayberry Fest. And so I want to call it Mayberry Fest, kind of a smaller version of what you guys have. And my plan was just to close off the block. We're going to have all the character artists come back into town. Don Notz's daughter's going to be here, you know, all the stars that are in the movie, they're all coming back for the red carpet event. We've got over 210 people that are actually going to walk the red carpet, so we want to actually extend the red carpet out into the street, and what we wanted to do is kind of do it like, probably an afternoon festival and go on into the evening for the red carpet event. When I proposed that to Bill, he says, well, let's just close off the whole square. He says, why don't we, since we're not doing the big festival, why don't we see if we can get some of the other vendors that would normally participate in the Mayberry in the Midwest, see if they would want to participate, and then maybe bring in a car show. And so I said, well, that's fine, I said, but on our half, the only thing that we want to do is basically do the, for the theater. So Bill says, don't worry, he says, I've got that old handle, he says, I've got somebody that'll do the car show, and we've got people that'll take care of the vendors. So that's why we're now going from the block to now, we'd like to do the whole square. For on that, since you're not having Mayberry in the Midwest, we want to call it Mayberry Fest, going to have a red carpet event, we'd like to get people downtown, and we want to kind of advertise this out and get people to come downtown for this special event. And I'm here to announce, I just got this cleared with Stark today, that we're going to do something even more than we originally planned on Sunday, the 16th. I've already got this cleared with Bill also. We're going to have a private viewing for the people in Danville. And we want to invite everybody from the city council and their guests to come on Sunday, probably do two, maybe three showings, starting at two, and probably two, five, and eight. So that's our plan right now. So we had to get that all approved with the attorneys and all that kind of stuff for the release of the movie. So this is kind of a private viewing, and so what we'd like to do is just kind of a small event, and I understand, somebody brought up at the meeting that I had, that you normally have like a farmer's market on that Saturday, and some thought that it may be on Washington Street, or some thought that it may be on Jefferson Street, we didn't really know. That really doesn't play into anything that's going to conflict with us, because basically ours is maybe starting at noon and going on till later in the day. So our request is, if we can just close off the block, and we'd like to have just a small festival downtown to celebrate this movie.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President, I would recommend that we get input from Kelly DiBenedetto from the Chamber of Commerce and Andy Johansson from the Department of Public Health.
Kelly? Yeah, because we just moved the farmer's market to Washington Street.
Correct.
Couple weeks ago.
Correct. And I spoke briefly with Debbie from the movie theater, and we talked about that the farmer's market moves out by noon, and they're gone, and then that would give them time to still set up their red carpet and everything.
Yeah, that's fine.
Ahead of time.
And we didn't know if bringing in some other vendors, if the farmer vendors wanted to stay a little bit longer, they might want to stay longer.
Some of them, some of them might consider that, and then they would, they would also pay their registration fee to you guys as well for the day. But most of our vendors do like to hop out, and one of the reasons that we moved it to Washington Street, that if the vendors are moving in on Jefferson and Marion, then it makes it easy for them to still get out at noon. So we're good with it as long as, yeah, I think it'd be great.
Andy, did you have anything to add?
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too. I sent you an email, but I thought we could meet tonight. And I, Kelly and I met with Brad and Christine Bourne at the Mayberry, and said the partnership is willing to help, I'll be there to help support them in any way we can, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
As far as I know.
Yeah, I was going to ask, first responders back there, you're good with it? Two thumbs. Let the record show two thumbs.
And Kelly, I know you've already sat down, I apologize, but did, would there be any issue with us shutting down the entire block for, I'll say, the entire day? And would that create any riff with the farmer's market people as far as parking or any other?
No, not at all. Our guys normally are there by 7:00 AM, and they're, they set up pretty much on their own, so that wouldn't be a problem for them at all. Just, we did, one thing we do need to make sure of is that right realtors are aware of it, because they have people in their residence that park on the square, and so we had to retrain them last year, so that's one thing that we need to make sure that they get notified. But, yeah, our vendors are happy to, with the Destination Danville Festival, they're excited about that. Anything that brings more people, they're happy with.
Thank you.
And what about the shops and like the restaurants that are on the square? Do they mind not having anybody be able to park? Or are they happy with?
It depends on who you talk to. But, I mean, part of, part of the things, you know, part of the reason for downtown Danville partnership and that kind of thing is to drive people to the square. And so to me, this is another opportunity to drive people to the square, so.
Okay.
And it's one day, it's not like they're closing down the square for all three days. Closing down the square for all three days does hurt them, I will, I mean, they would say, a lot of them would say it hurts them. But closing down the square for one day, I think they would be happy with.
Okay.
Yep.
Tom?
Do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
So we are talking about the entire square from 8:00 AM until midnight that night?
We can make, in conjunction with the police department, the partnership will make notifications off. So the curve will put on there.
Okay. Very good. Anything else from anyone? All right. Well, do we have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve the street closure for the Mayberry Festival.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Jenny, do you mind giving a roll call?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Hey, thank you. Passes five zero. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
You don't have to stay if you don't want to. Yeah. That sounds great. Yes, sir.
All right, on to everyone's favorite subject these days, the host fund budget. Clerk Treasurer Jenny Percey.
I'm presenting to you the 2021 host fund budget as per the work studies and the discussions that we have had. If you look at the expense report, which is the first page, it shows the $1,157,577 for the annual budget for the host fund, and I'm looking for approval this evening.
Yes, we've had some extensive discussions. Does anyone from the council have any comments, questions, concerns? Okay. Well, I think we all deserve a little bit of kudos for the discussions that we had.
Very spirited.
Very spirited.
I liked it, yeah.
And we, and we got to, I think, a good spot, and probably wasn't everything we wanted, but you can't always get everything you want. But I think we're in good shape, and I commend everyone for their hard work on that. All right, so, well, do we have a motion for the host fund budget?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the host fund budget and also simultaneously make an additional $300,000 deposit into the host future fund.
I would like to have discussions about that. Before we do that, I would like to look at that in the fall, get through the year, make sure we don't have anything come up, and then we absolutely can do that in the fall, if that's okay, you know, like October, November, December, fourth quarter.
Well, with his, with the, being able to move money in and out of that account, I don't know if that's actually, you know, a necessity. I mean, if we can make a deposit and then also make a withdrawal, I mean, if something were to come up, you know, do we, do we need to wait?
Well, it's not as easy to make a withdrawal. We can make deposits anytime, it's not as easy to make a withdrawal.
And why is that?
Because they start investing that money. We can, but it's just not as easy to withdraw.
I understand. The normal operation of those types of accounts is a two-day settlement, and then cash is available for withdrawal. I understand it's a process, but normally, it's actually fairly, fairly quick.
Okay.
So, I, I mean, from what I understand.
I guess we have technically a motion, so I have to wait to see if we have a second on that or not. I tend to go with what Jenny says and maybe wait to do that, but we have, we have a motion on the floor, so. Do we have a second? Motion, motion dies. Okay. We have, we can still make a motion on the, okay. So do we have a motion to pass the budget as it is right now?
I move that we pass the host fund budget as it appears right now.
I have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Jenny, can you do a roll call, please?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero. If I may, take a personal pause here, I just want to announce that Danville High School did win their first sectional game up in Frankfort against Crawfordsville, so. They play on Friday night. There we go. All right. Okay, moving on to item C, resolution 5-2021, COVID-19 sick leave. Jenny?
This is to amend. We had a sick leave for COVID till December 31st of 2020. This is to extend it to March 31st of 2021.
All right, do we have any questions or comments? I do have one, if I may. This is retroactive to January 1st.
Yes, thank you for asking that.
And it does, yeah, sure. It does apply to employees who have to stay home because either a spouse or a child has been ill. So if they had to use their vacation time from January 1st to now, that would be restored?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And really quickly, Jenny, it actually is tied to the public health emergency, which right now is the end of March, but if the governor keeps extending it, then it would keep extending, so then if you guys decide to stop that as the, as the governor keeps extending that public health emergency, then you would need to take action.
Thank you. Okay. Nothing else? Do I have a motion for resolution 5-2021?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 5-2021.
Do I have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Jenny, can you take a roll, please?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye. Thank you. Passes five zero. All righty. Time for Will to shine. Park master plan and RIF. All right, so this is what I've been talking about for a while, it's just kind of formal, formalizing the approval. The park board did pass the approval, five oh, we did send out RFPs, and this one came in 10,000 less than all the other ones, so. And they are good people. We used Lehman &amp; Lehman prior for the RIF, which is Recreation Impact Fee, and ZEC 8 is actually a company similar to like a consultant in the field, so they're pretty good too, so. Can you explain what the Recreation Impact Fee does? Sure. So the Recreation Impact Fee is a fee to a new, new home coming to Danville, so, because they're going to put an impact on the parks department, they're going to use all the facilities and features, and so the goal is to use those dollars to save up. Currently, our deficiencies, it's a little loud, currently, our deficiencies are in trails and parks, and so we're saving those dollars to hopefully build trails and parks. You've seen some of the dollars already being spent. We're hoping to save up and a lot with the food and beverage too, and do bigger projects with a lot of it. But the goal is to kind of expand a little bit more, get the trail system out, and kind of connect all these neighborhoods, so it's a benefit back to them as well, so. It's, and it involves developers and builders, they're actually the RIF board, and they actually set the fee. So that's kind of cool, the study builds it all together, they come up with a guesstimate, and then the RIF board actually decide what, what works. We actually brought the fee down $200 in the last one because we wanted to, you know, make sure we're not harming any development in Danville too, so. Anybody else have any other questions? You know, I mean, I have, I usually have a lot of questions. So what is the fee that we're paying for this, and what, and I think I know the answer, but just for the sake of discussion, what is the fee and what is the impact, positive impact to the residents of Danville? So pretty much, so you've seen the use of Ellis Park, you can kind of use that as an example. If you go down there lately, you know, more and more, the more people come to it, the more abuse it gets, so the goal is to grow the park system to accommodate the population, pretty much, and we haven't done that in the past, but the problem is, because we haven't done that in the past, we're saving for the future. So it's kind of like a savings plan for the parks, but the benefit, it benefits everyone, not just, you know, one population. So it's fair to say that the fees we spend on this study will be recovered? Oh, yeah, so, just in the last one, Barry, you're gonna, maybe $150,000 off the last one, and the projections are pretty good for this one as well. Yeah, he's already got 13, so there's quite a bit of money. And the goal is for us to not hold on to it, the goal is for us to use it. Put it back. And for the citizens to get to enjoy it. And, I mean, you kind of see the things popping up, and it's all because of these things that we did five years ago, because for us, you know, we have to save, so five years ago, we get to see it now, so if we start now, this money, you'll see five years from now as well, so. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the park master plan and RIF.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Jenny?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
All right, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
All righty, moving on down, capital expenditure request from Chief Hilton, Police K-9.
Mr. Vice President and council members, I come before you tonight with a capital expenditure request. As you know, I think you've seen that we try to raise a lot of money lately for our K-9 program. I come to you tonight to let you know that we've raised over $30,000 with grants and donations from the community members and so many other partners in this area that just love their K-9 program. So I come to you with a proposal to spend $11,000 in this request. This all comes from donations and grant money. Sergeant Slayback is here tonight to answer any questions you might have about the K-9 program. He runs it, and he recently went over to Ohio and handpicked out this dog, so any questions you might have for him while he's here, I'll let him answer that, and he's the expert on the K-9 program.
How old is the new dog that you're looking at?
He just turned, he just turned 14 months, I do believe, so he's actually pretty young for, typically, they're about two years old.
And who's the officer that's going to be in charge of him?
I will be the one handling him.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And we're adding a second dog with some, because we were able to raise so much money that we're adding a second dog, and the first one's been utilized so much that we can justify it at this point. I mean, I had, I think I'm averaging around 100 deployments with him a year, and that includes, you know, narcotic searches, stuff like that, so the second officer will be getting his dog. I'm hoping for spring, summer is my goal with him. So it's kind of a process, because these dogs are imported, and some of the imports have been shut down because of the COVID restrictions, so they're kind of, when dogs come in, they go really fast, so.
And, and I may have misunderstood what I was looking at here the other day, but is one dog being retired?
Yes, we'll retire one dog in the spring.
Okay.
That'll replace his dog.
Okay.
The one he's here for tonight will replace his dog for.
Gotcha. Okay.
So when you go pick out a dog like that, what, what drew you to that dog?
The, it was actually the vendor that we use, he's put on some training classes. We train as a county, we train with the Sheriff's Department, they have a couple trainers, and then Avon's got a trainer that, they're all certified trainers, but we train, every K-9 in the county all trains together, plus some guys from Whitestown. He's put on, he put on a three-day training class for us last summer, and the guy's a former K-9 handler and supervisor for Canton Police Department, and he became a vendor and dog breeder, and I really like, I like this guy personally, so I kind of started looking into his company, and I've done a lot of research into it, because it, there's obviously probably some companies out there that are just in it for the money, and they're just pushing dogs out. This guy's not like that, so that was my big thing, was that I wanted somebody, and I like the fact that he's, was also a police officer, he knows how to actually do it, so.
Will these dogs be the same, I mean, in their training? Will they?
Yes, so my dog will actually be what we call a done dog. This trainer's going to train the dog completely done, where some dogs aren't, they're not ready, and then they have to go through a school and stuff with them. Our other dog will probably be that way, but because I've handled a dog for five years now, I can take a dog that's already ready. I know how to, my, the way I compare it is you don't hand a 16-year-old the keys to a Ferrari, but you can handle a dolt the keys to a Ferrari, so. That's no knock on our new handler, but he's just never done it before, so, yeah.
I'll edit that out.
I think David wants to take the Ferrari for a spin.
My seven-year-old daughter is already asking for a Lambo, as she calls it.
Ah, nice.
I think this is kind of a no-brainer, since you guys have raised so much money.
Yeah, the community's been, I mean, went above and beyond what I thought was even possible, because the majority of that, I think only 12,000 of its grants, and the rest is all donated money, and it's primarily for people in our community. There have been some outside donors from, there's been some people from out of state that have donated, because it was on the news and stuff, and of course, people saw it, but people have wrote letters, sent pictures of their dogs, and I mean, it's, it's been, every time that we've asked for money or, you know, done some fundraisers just to try and prevent the strain, I don't want it to start straining other things on the budget, the community has stepped up. I mean, that was just from, I think, like a month and a half, two months, and we had to, we basically had to put it out there like, okay, we don't need, because we're to a point now where we can actually take some of this money and put it towards upgrading other things that we didn't think were going to be possible. We've got a course down at our firing range for the K-9s, it's like an agility course that has, it needs updated, but it was, we thought it was going to be a slow process, now we can literally do it all at once, so.
And the new dog's name's Jack?
Jack, correct. Yep. Yep, he's a Malinois, I don't know if anybody's familiar with what a Malinois is.
Do you know Jack?
He speaks Dutch, right?
Yes, my dog does, yeah. My new dog, I, my new dog will potentially speak Dutch, it depends on how the trainer trains him. That is correct, though.
Is Zeke retiring in Florida?
He should, at this point, yeah. With his joints the way they are and stuff, I think a warm environment would probably be best for him, so.
You said using funds for other things, you're talking about the money you raised for the dog?
Yes, correct.
And are these other things related to the dog?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so we're going to upgrade some of the equipment stuff that may not be, you know, bad right now, but you don't want to get to a point where it's not usable and then we don't have it, so we're going to try and get ahead of that, where we've got stuff on standby, where if a leash starts to go bad, or a harness starts to break down, then we can just replace it. We're not waiting two weeks for it to come in, and then we don't have that equipment, because it's, obviously, the equipment for a dog is very vital, so.
Well, I'd like to meet Jack.
I, when we, we were discussing this earlier, when we retire Zeke, I probably will bring him in here.
Cool.
I don't know about Jack, because he's a little bit of a spaz, so.
Might want to wait a little bit.
Yeah.
I don't want to get, I don't want to be on the news that way. Anything else from any of the council members? Tom?
Tom, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
All righty, well, I will entertain a motion for the capital expenditure request for the Police K-9.
I move that we approve the capital expenditure for the Police K-9.
Second. Yeah, a motion and a second. Jenny?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
All right, motion carries five zero. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right, looks like we're going to have a garage sale. Resolution 4-2021. Public Works Superintendent, Mr. Pritchard.
Good evening. So we do want to push forward the resolution 4-2021. When coming on to Public Works, seeing the, the grounds out there, there was a lot of items that were, were stacked up and stored for many, many years, and you guys did, should have received the list in your packets, so basically, we just want to put that online. It's going to be a longer process, so we don't have to try to go about having auction all in one day, as well as having higher traffic volume to see the items. We use the same website out in Montana, and so it, it is for government entities, it's It's solely government property that's being sold. So when people go on there, they know the, the value in most of the items. But I don't know exactly we need to do.
That's it? That's all you have to say? Any, yeah, you don't, you don't have to go through each item if you don't want to.
I was hoping I didn't have to.
For those of you who can't see the list, oh, there it is. It's pretty, pretty large.
Is it going to be an auction?
Yes, it's an online auction site. So essentially, it'll be six to seven items for about a seven-day period.
Yeah.
And then once those auctions close, then we'll load up this next six or seven items. So gradually, they'll, they'll disappear.
Yeah, I think it's going to be very popular.
And the individuals that win the bids are the ones that pay for the shipping?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the town of Danville will not pay any shipping nor any loading costs or anything like that.
And is there anything left at Public Works or do you?
There is plenty left.
Okay, just checking.
Based on the space that we have there, it will benefit us greatly to be able to open up some more space.
Sure will.
Thank you.
You don't need the sewing machine?
We can bring it over to your house if you'd like.
And did I see the sewing machine was actually donated? Or it somehow we acquired it? I don't even know.
From.
It would probably be my guess that it was from the school when we took the school over.
Okay.
Still left over.
Ah, okay. Need chalkboards and, and items that were left over from the school that have been stored in, in the buildings and it's a, the space is a commodity and we need to make sure we can put some more items in there.
Well, good. I'm glad you went, took the time and went through and figured that out.
Now, can any other departments throw stuff into this auction?
I did put out a request for that.
Oh, okay.
This is something that I, I looked forward to maybe on a semi-annual basis to just try to clear out some of the things that are just being stored and not, not being used anymore, that have reached their lifespan, things that have been replaced, smaller items. Vehicles and equipment are generally traded in to get the value out of them that way towards the next piece of equipment or vehicle. But these smaller items, they've, they've reached their lifespan as far as we're concerned. No longer in good working order for us. Private citizens may have more time and energy to, to put their repairs into them, so.
Anyone else? So I'm sure there's a, a solid accounting system in place for this, but the money gets paid by the customer or the bidder. How does that come to the town? How does it get dispersed? I assume in their budget?
So what will happen is depending on what fund we purchase the item from, it will be received back into that. So whether it's MBH, LRS, or the general fund, or even the host fund, we'll receive it back into that, so.
So even on some of these older items, I'm sure some of these things have been there for a while.
Yes.
We have record of where that came from initially?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, unless it's really old and then, then we wouldn't and we can just go by, if we were to purchase it today.
The description, yeah, where it would come from.
Where we would be purchasing it from.
Okay.
We'll just have to work real close together on as you sell them, you know, we're saving it in and then I need to get it off the asset report and the capital asset report. That'll be really, really important, too.
Okay, and that'll, that'll occur before I even start the auction.
Okay.
We control everything as far as the auction goes. We set the, the start date, the end date, and minute, any minimum bids. A lot of the things, we won't even put a minimum bid on there, just trying to move them out of our, our location. Speaking of older items that may not be on there, if you can see, there's a cleaner or a six-by-six that, that is still on, on the property that we're trying to remove as well. I, it took some legwork trying to find who I could talk to for that. It was donated by Civil Defense, which is now FEMA, and that took over in 1979, so.
Oh, wow.
Nobody was around to talk to, about that item.
All right, one last thing. Nancy, to your point a minute ago about other departments, should we have a push to other departments to kind of go through and clean house or do, have they been doing that more regularly?
I, I, Superintendent Pitcher put out two requests to other departments. Nobody responded.
Okay.
I, I think, but honestly, just my personal opinion, everybody's waiting to see how this goes to see what they do best, so.
Okay.
And I did talk to Superintendent Pitcher about any items that don't sell, that he decides that they have no value. We will have to come back before you with another resolution declaring those with no value, so that we can discard them or get them out of the trap.
But I'm going to be a positive poly and say they're all going to sell. We'd like to do that. One thing, I just thought about this, but today, the Parks Department did come pick up the 60 gallon ATV sprayer, so that, that will be transferred to another department.
Of course they did.
Will's always out there looking for, looking for a deal. Looking for a deal.
All right. Well, if there is no other discussion, I will entertain a motion for Resolution four, 2021.
I make, I make a motion that we approve Resolution four dash 2021.
Second.
Motion and a second? Jenny, would you mind roll call?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Nancy Levitt? Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. Okay. Greg was telling me I need to delay this meeting a little bit longer. Moving on to the last item, Ordinance seven dash 2021. My son would like this one. Increase in the speed limit on County Road 200 East.
In the file, in your packet, you'll see a, a, a letter confirming a study from Traffic Engineering indicating on 200 East, we had reduced that speed limit to 30 miles an hour. Their study shows that 40 miles an hour would be an exceptional, or would be a good speed limit. So tonight is a first read for this ordinance to increase the maximum speed limit along 200 East to 40 miles an hour. Again, you don't need to take any action on it. It's for a first read.
Satisfied first read rules? All right.
I, I would make a motion that we suspend the rules and act on this today. We've discussed it before.
We have a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion and a second? Jenny, you mind if we roll?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pato? Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
Okay, the rules have been suspended five zero. I will now entertain a motion to pass the ordinance.
I make a motion that we pass Ordinance seven dash 2021 to increase the speed limit on County Road 200 East.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Jenny, would you mind?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pato? Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Caitlin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'll still have to advertise this for two weeks prior to us making any change in the signs themselves. Thank you. Right, okay.
I need the original for signature then since we passed it.
I'll have to go get it for you.
Thank you.
I wasn't quite expecting this.
Sorry to, sorry to throw off the mojo there, but that's all right.
If it's all right with the council, then on the staff and council comments, I'll turn this over to, I'll go through.
Okay.
Can I read the handwriting?
First one's your department.
Yeah, no, I can read that one.
Okay. A while, markers out. We'll go ahead and move to the staff and council comments. Mr.?
Go ahead. Okay, the Parks Winterland Cleanup, Flagpole Light Install, Tomahawk Trail Run, and we started ping pong tonight. Water Department Filling Water Main at 300 East, Reading Meters, Hydrant Repair, and Plant Expect Inspection Done by IDAM. I think they were working on some fixes on that, just some small minor things. Stormwater inspections, lots of permits coming in. Barry's going to be in the office a little bit there. Goodwill Sidewalk Lights at Mary Queen of Peace, I think. Did we find a happy place on that one? Okay, awesome. And then Ceiling Lights at Town Hall. Yeah. Oh, I think you have to do it with your thumb, right? Sorry. Tom's going to have to go with you. All right. Admin None, Wastewater UV Installed by 311 for Inspection. Woodfield Lift Station Pumps Are Good, I Guess. Spring Checks, Sewer Outflow Enforcement. And let's see here. Public Works Military Banners Going Up This Week. Potholes, of course, working on those. Also met with the Schools on some Crosswalk Signage Options. Lights Out In The Parking Lot At Marion In Indiana, But He's Working On A Fix On That One. Fire Department, 313 Runs For The Year, Medic Refresh, And Lots Of Auto Accidents. Planning, Planning Commission Letters Went Out, Maybe? Went out? Working on, okay. And then the Shape Files, right? Shake, shape? Yeah, Shape Files Are Going Out. She was helping me with the RIF and Master Plan Items. Police Department, We Have Hospital Mental Runs. Uptake, uptick? Uptick In Meth Runs And Reserves Uniforms Are Coming In, Right?
Okay.
And that's all we have. Anybody else? Rob has something.
Fire Chief Roberts.
You guys can take a look at our webpage, DanvilleFire.org. We just recently launched an update on that. And so we revamped that whole webpage. And so that, that went live Friday. And we also put our online applications on there. We are now accepting applications for a paramedic. One left at the end of the year. We're just now replacing that paramedic. And so candidates can go online and fill out an online application and it automatically goes to our email. So we've updated that and we, so anybody you know that wants to be a firefighter, paramedic, send them our way.
Thank you.
Yep.
I, I do have one comment on your website. You need to put a picture of yourself on here.
Yeah, we're working on that, so.
Am I not seeing it? Do we have any information on the baby box on there?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Right there. So.
Very good. Very nice.
So the baby box should be?
I don't see it on here.
I do believe it's on there.
I see Knox Box.
Should be in her programs.
I don't see it.
Well, we'll have to put a, there is on the, on the program here, so right down here. Scroll up one, click on that picture. And there should be.
Okay.
Learn More. So if you drop down one, you can see Learn More Down There On The Baby Box.
Excellent. Thank you.
And you probably did see a lot of fire apparatus coming through town today. We assisted North Salem on a big commercial barn-type fire today. So that's all I got to report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jenny, you have anything?
Just wanted to let you guys know, I sent you an email, but the annual report is finished and been submitted, and it will be in the Republican tomorrow.
Very good.
Let you guys know.
Just congratulations to the boys' basketball team.